Gardner City Council to come to order if you please stand for the House of the League.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got several presentations this evening, the first up of two awards for our wastewater treatment plant operation. If Dave, if you'd join me, Jim's not here, I know, but Steve and Scott are here, you guys would come on up as well. These are a couple of great awards you guys should certainly be very, very proud of, and I think that the city should be proud of as well. The first is the 2012 Kansas Water Environment Association Treatment Facility Award. This award is given to treatment facilities that meet a fairly lengthy set of criteria. I think there was like seven pages of items and multiple elements within each question that you have to meet regarding the performance of the wastewater treatment plant, the effluent of the wastewater treatment plant, all of the measurements that we take, and essentially the quality of the water that leaves that plant when it comes in. And we know that the quality's not necessarily all that grand on the input of the plant, but coming out of the plant, it's very, very good. And it's also something that we use to irrigate our park, celebration park, so it's very, very good. You guys should be most proud of that. Also from the KWEA for 2012 is the Plant Safety Award. And this is something that's really special because, one, having you guys work in a safe environment, especially in that environment because there are all sorts of risks with respect to physical hazards as well as infections, biohazards, and so on. So it was really a fairly dangerous environment. And then when things don't go as they should and you have to crawl down into places that most of us wouldn't necessarily want to crawl down into, and you do it, you do it well, you do it safely. This particular award, I think this is the third time that we've got this, and the fourth time that we've got for the Plant Award, so that is really outstanding work you guys do. Anybody here? No? No? Sure?
We appreciate it. A lot of hard work, the guys do a real good job. We can't do it, everybody's a real good team, everybody's kind of bid in on the whole safety aspect. So like I say, couldn't do without the guys and the one big team, and we appreciate it.
Awesome. Got it all. Okay, wonderful. Next, we have some service awards tonight. Several of the folks could not make it this evening, and we'll catch them up in December, but we did have two that were able to make it tonight. The first is Officer Danny Hackler. And there he is, and has a crew with him. That's good. The, I know that the folks from Police Department like to bring groupies along when we have these events. This is a, this is a great award for Danny. Danny's been with us for five years, been an officer, full-time officer for that time, so he's been with us a little longer than five years actually. And, but he's been with the city full-time since that. I know that Danny does a very good job. He's a neighbor, so that's helpful, gives me a high degree of comfort. But also, he's come to my aid a couple of times, most recently when the fuel pump decided to quit pumping fuel in my vehicle, Danny was there to help me out. And that's always a great thing, and that's the kind of service that we get from, I know from Danny and certainly from all our officers, we're very proud of the work you do, and very proud to know you, and glad you're on our course. Jim, anything?
Well, you pretty much said everything I often want to. So Danny's been here five years. Part of that, he was here for reserve for a year and a half. And before that, he was, I mean, it's about every other week to ride along with us to make sure this is what he wanted to do for a living. Obviously, we hired him, and he's definitely been an asset to the department with the job that he does for us. Thank you.
Would you have a certificate recognizing your service, and then a little bit to hopefully celebrate your five years? We turned the camera off for this presentation, but anyway, thank you very much. One more, Morgan. If you'd like to come up. There. Morgan also has been with us for five years. She's currently in customer service, and I think Morgan's mission, since she joined the City of Gardner five years ago, was to get a job in her night. She started out in parks, and not many in southern parks here in Gardner is in, oh, no, no, and then moved into meter reading in utility building, and it's a pretty, it's a good exercise program.
I love it, yeah.
Yeah, but the, there's variable climates, and now she's in a nice, nice climate-controlled, yeah, depends, right, environment. But we certainly appreciate the fact that you stayed with us, and that you had the opportunity to work for the organization. It's been a lot about, you know, your character and your work ethic that you may have moved up through the organization, and we hope you have many more years of service and promotion in Gardner. So, Amy?
I would just like to say congratulations. You've had Morgan for two and a half years, two years as a meter reader, and six months
Danny and Morgan, and then all the folks at Wastewater, so please get yourself a cup of coffee and a cookie, and then we'll get started here, probably about another ten minutes.
in customer service, and I'm just proud to get to watch you develop, and to have the initiative to want to try different positions, because each position that you've had has been very different. And so to have the ambition to go out and learn something new, and to just hit that
Gardner City Council to come to order if you would please stand for the House of the
challenge head-on, and we were great to have you, and such a positive attitude, and high regard for our customers and other staffers, so we're glad to have you, and many, many more years.
So, we do, certificate recognizing your five years, and then said a little something to celebrate. Do you want to say anything?
Thank you, Jeff.
League. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we've got several presentations this evening, the first up of two awards for our wastewater treatment plant operation. If Dave, if you'd join me, Jim's not here, I know, but Steve and Scott are here, you guys would come on up as well. These are a couple of great awards you guys should certainly be very, very proud of, and I think that the city should be proud of as well. The first is the 2012 Kansas Water Environment Association Treatment Facility Award. This award is given to treatment facilities that meet a fairly lengthy set of criteria. I think there was like seven pages of items and multiple elements within each question that you have to meet regarding the performance of the wastewater treatment plant, the effluent of the wastewater treatment plant, all of the measurements that we take, and essentially the quality of the water that leaves that plant when it comes in. And we know that the quality's not necessarily all that grand on the input of the plant, but coming out of the plant, it's very, very good. And it's also something that we use to irrigate our park, celebration park, so it's very, very good. You guys should be most proud of that. Also from the KWEA for 2012 is the Plant Safety Award. And this is something that's really special because, one, having you guys work in a safe environment, especially in that environment because there are all sorts of risks with respect to physical hazards as well as infections, biohazards, and so on. So it was really a fairly dangerous environment. And then when things don't go as they should, and you have to crawl down into places that most of us wouldn't necessarily want to crawl down into, and you do it, you do it well, you do it safely. This particular award, I think this is the third time that we've got this, and the fourth time that we've got for the Plant Award, so that is really outstanding work you guys do. Anywhere? Everybody? No? No? Sure?
We appreciate it. A lot of hard work, the guys do a real good job. We can't do it, everybody's a real good team, everybody's kind of bid in on the whole safety aspect. So like I say, couldn't do without the guys and the one big team, and we appreciate it.
Awesome. Got it all. Okay, wonderful. Next, we have some service awards tonight. Several of the folks could not make it this evening, and we'll catch them up in December, but we did have two that were able to make it tonight. The first is Officer Danny Hackler. And there he is, and has a, has a crew with him. That's good. The, I know that the folks from Police Department like to bring groupies along when we have these events. This is a, this is a great award for Danny. Danny's been with us for five years, been an officer, full-time officer for that time, so he's been with us a little longer than five years actually. And, but he's been with the city full-time since that. I know that Danny does a very good job. He's a neighbor, so that's helpful, gives me a high degree of comfort. But also, he's come to my aid a couple of times, most recently when the fuel pump decided to quit pumping fuel in my vehicle, Danny was there to help me out, and that's always a great thing, and that's the kind of service that we get from, I know from Danny, and certainly from all our officers, we're very proud of the work you do, and very proud to know you, and glad you're on our course. Jim, anything?
Well, you pretty much said everything I often want to. So Danny's been here five years, part of that, he was here for reserve for a year and a half, and before that, he was, I mean, it's about every other week to ride along with us to make sure this is what he wanted to do for a living. Obviously, we hired him, and he's definitely been an asset to the department with the job that he does for us. Thank you.
Would you have a certificate recognizing your service, and then a little bit to hopefully celebrate your five years? We turned the camera off for this presentation, but anyway, thank you very much. One more, Morgan. If you'd like to come up. There. Morgan also has been with us for five years. She's currently in customer service, and I think Morgan's mission, since she joined the City of Gardner five years ago, was to get a job in her night. She started out in parks, and not many in southern parks here in Gardner is in, oh, no, no, and then moved into meter reading in utility building, and it's a pretty, it's a good exercise program.
I love it, yeah.
Yeah, but the, there's variable climates, and now she's in a nice, nice climate-controlled, yeah, depends, right, environment. But we certainly appreciate the fact that you stayed with us, and that you had the opportunity to work for the organization. It's been a lot about, you know, your character and your work ethic that you made able to move up through the organization, and we hope you have many more years of service and promotion in Gardner. So, Amy?
I would just like to say congratulations. You've had Morgan for two and a half years, two years as a meter reader, and six months in customer service, and I'm just proud to get to watch you develop, and to have the initiative to want to try different positions, because each position that you've had has been very different. And so to have the ambition to go out and learn something new, and to just hit that challenge head-on, and we were great to have you, and such a positive attitude, and high regard for our customers and other staffers, so we're glad to have you, and many, many more years.
So, we do, certificate recognizing your five years, and then said a little something to celebrate. Do you want to say anything?
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, well, we're going to take a little break, have a few minutes to congratulate Danny and Morgan, and then all the folks at Wastewater, so please get yourself a cup of coffee and a cookie, and then we'll get started here, probably about another ten minutes. Gardner City Council to come to order if you would please stand for the House of the League. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started again. One more picture in the back. Okay. We do have time on our agenda for members of the public to speak about matters that do not appear on our agenda, or that are on our agenda and not part of a public hearing. If you do wish to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for our clerk.
My name is Farrell Cordell. I live at 216 Marburg Circle. My concern for the council members and anybody else concerned about several council people here that are concerned about it, some couldn't make it, but I would like to address the council on the excessive horn blowing of the, wherever I go down here, I realize they're working on it, and they have procedures to follow, but I'd like to get something done, maybe a no-blow zone from the existing no-blow zone to Poplar Street, and have some regards to people that have lost loved ones in their cemeteries. And I'm sure that the director of funeral services would have to notify him or something like that for maybe just a short blow, but I know on September 21st, from eight o'clock in the evening to eight o'clock in the morning Saturday, I took it on my own to set up most of the night. I did those, I won't lie to you. But there was, at a quarter to four in the morning, one train was headed east, one was headed west, and fifteen times long consecutive blows, thirteen times for another one that was passing, I guess it was buses or something, I don't know. But I think that's a little excessive, no less than four times. And it was kind of just my understanding that they used to have maybe something like a two-shoitz and a long or something like that. I could live with that. And the crossing out there, it's got arms on it, it's got dinger bells, because I listened to them for about three hours, and all along I was sitting there around the tracks where they, I guess the bell was ringing, but I heard it for, I can't live in my house without, with the windows up. I mean, it's, I can watch my TV and have it on pretty much controlled volume, and by the time the trains quit blowing their whistles, I've got it up to 27. It's like here my own TV in my own house. Pretty much prisoner after nine o'clock in my own house. And I'd like to address that to the council and see if we can get something done with the no-blow zone. That's pretty much, I've probably got a lot more I could say, but I just don't want to get too much more involved in it, but I'd like the council to address Santa Fe, or I worked out there through the dirt-moving process, and I understand the safety policies and all that, and I'm all for that, I don't have anything against that. Last I knew, they didn't put a night shift on, a minimal of eight times that they blow their horn. And it's, it's not just a long continuous blow, it's about every time one comes through there, it's rather annoying and a little ridiculous as far as I'm concerned. And I'm sure that all my neighbors and friends back there will protest for that, and say any of them had time to come up and put their comments in, it's all a mess with the council, I'd sure appreciate it.
Anyone can come up and speak that wishes to?
Thank you.
I have one question. If you could leave your contact information with the clerk before you go tonight, so if we do have any correspondence back from the railroads, we can make sure that you're included, and anyone else, and anyone else that would like to be included, if you would leave your contact, name and address would be sufficient. I realize they're working on it, they have procedures to follow, but I'd like to get something done, maybe a no-blow zone from the existing no-blow zone to Poplar Street, and have some regards to people that have lost loved ones in their cemeteries. And I'm sure that the director of funeral services would have to notify him or something like that, for maybe just a short blow. But I know on September 21st, from eight o'clock in the evening to eight o'clock in the morning Saturday, I took it on my own to set up most of the night. I did those, I won't lie to you. But there was at a quarter to four in the morning, one train was headed east, one was headed west, and fifteen times, long consecutive blows, thirteen times for another one when they were passing, I guess it was buses or something, I don't know. But I think that's a little excess, no less than four times. And it was kinda just my understanding that they used to have maybe something like a two shorts and a long, or something like that. I could live with that. And the crossing out there, it's got arms on it, it's got dinger bells, because I listened to them for about three hours, all along, I was sitting there around the tracks where they, I guess the bell was ringing, but I heard it through. I can't live in my house without, with the windows up. I mean, it's, I can watch my TV and have it on pretty much controlled volume, and by the time the trains quit blowing their whistles, I've got it up to twenty-seven. It's like here my own TV in my own house. Pretty much prisoner after nine o'clock in my own house. And I'd like to address that to the council and see if we can get something done with the no-blow zone. That's pretty much, I've probably got a lot more I could say, but I just don't wanna get too much more involved in it, but I'd like the council to address Santa Fe, or I worked out there through the dirt-moving process, and I understand the safety policies and all that, and I'm all for that, I don't have anything against that. Last I knew, they didn't put a night shift on. A minimal of eight times that they blow their horn. And it's, it's not just a long, continuous blow, it's about every time one comes through there, it's rather annoying and a little ridiculous as far as I'm concerned. And I'm sure that all my neighbors and friends back there will protest for that. And if any of them had time to come up and put their comments in, it's all a mess for the council, I'd sure appreciate it.
Anyone can come up and speak that wishes to?
Thank you.
Cap, one question, if you could leave your contact information with the clerk before you go tonight, so if we do have any correspondence back from the railroad, we can make sure that you're included. And anyone else that would like to be included, if you would leave your contact, name and address would be sufficient, phone number if you like. Appreciate that.
My name is Brandon Fabger, I live at 217 Meadowbrook Circle. Like Cap said, I'm more concerned with the kids that are in the neighborhood, because the kids that play, we're all very close to the tracks, we knew we were close to the track, we knew there, but we didn't realize how many times and how loud the trains were gonna be. And since the construction of the intermodal, the trains have increased by at least double. And from what I understand, when the intermodal's done, there'll be a train every fifteen minutes. Every fifteen minutes throughout a day and night with that horn blowing that loud, my little girl holds her ears and screams because it's too loud. I mean, it's just too loud, it hurts her ear growth, and that's the only way I could get her to not run from it. She would run in the house every time. Now she holds her ears and screams instead, just to block out the hearing. I'm sure it's not good for any of the kids hearing at all. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I just second what Cap said. We've, I've lived there for thirty, I don't know, twenty-eight years. Do you need your folks to come in so that we can hear you? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laurel Shig, and I live at 211 Meadowbrook Circle, and I just wanted to know what the other people have said. I've lived there for twenty-eight years, and we have noticed the increasing train, and you know, you can't leave your windows open when it's night like this at night, because you can't sleep, it's just constant, and you know, usually we sleep through anything. So you have to get up, shut the windows, you know, and then you still hear them, but it's not as muffled. If we could just take that under advisement, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm Harold Clayton, 15735 Lake Road 5. Is this the time to talk about spillway?
You certainly can, Harold.
Oh, okay. We'd like to have it fixed. It's in heck of a shape. Not only does it need to be fixed, but I think the Kansas Water Board's gonna talk to you about that one these days, go get it cleaned up a little, a little bit. Even if you could put a coat of concrete on that thing, and level it out, and open the gates, I think it'd be a real asset. Cost emergency vehicles, and it would look a bunch better.
Appreciate it, thank you, Harold.
My name's Megan Fabger, from 217 Meadowbrook Circle. I just wanted to reiterate what everyone else has said about the trains. It has, I was raised one half of a city block away from a train railroad crossing, and I'm very accustomed to all the, all the train noises that ensue. Since I've lived in this house, I have started with sleep deprivation, to the point of having anxiety attacks. That is all. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm William Hicks. I live at 213 Meadowbrook Circle. I'll say what, what Cap said about, about the trains. We moved there, understanding, yeah, the motor was gonna come through. But now, it's gotten ridiculous on these blowing their horn. I mean, it's like they're carrying on a conversation with the next guy down, thing down there past Waverly Drive, or intersection, whatever you wanna call. I mean, it's always long and loud. I used to be a correctional officer. Now I know what the prisoners feel like, being a prisoner in my own home. You can't even go out, carry on a conversation with your friends, you gotta keep your windows, if you keep your windows up, you gotta talk loud to each other, or turn your television up loud, which is ridiculous. We had, my kids came home, and they asked me, "You always live like this?" "Right now." You know? I don't think y'all would like to be a prisoner in your own home. And we don't either. If you take that into consideration. We had this part here, would appreciate it.
Anyone else?
My name is David Green, and I live at 305 West Warren, and I've lived there for ten years. And same thing where it used to be short blows, you know, and I work out in my garage, out in my backyard, and you know, I say if I'm talking on my cellphone, you know, I go back into my garage so I can talk, you know, or go around the garage, or whatever. And, you know, it's, and then I always keep my windows out. So, you know, it's, it is annoying, very annoying. But, you know, we'd appreciate, you know, if we could have something done about it. I don't know what, you know, the next step would be for us to do, you know? Whether we could get conditions, you know, or what? But anyway, I'd like to have something done about it, if we could.
The, I mean, I do know there's been changes. First, I guess the earliest change was the way in which the horn patterns worked, they went to have, you talked about it, three shorts and a, you know, long is what the, is what the pattern is supposed to be, and then the duration depends on the speed of the train and so on, I don't know all the rules. And that, that happened about two or three years ago, I believe. And then perhaps the most significant change that is impacting, you know, Warren, the north side of the tracks is the two tracks now, instead of just the one track, instead of the southern track and the north track.
Yeah, the southern track they took out.
Yeah.
So we get all of that noise, plus what we have.
So all the, so all of the mainline traffic is now on the north side. And I, I certainly can empathize with you. I live basically in the same place on the south side, about, probably two hundred foot from the, from the south track is where, where we live, and, and about an eighth of a mile up the Grand Street Crosses.
Well, no, too.
Now that's, that's shut down.
If the track's lower, you know, or whatever, the sound's gonna be buffered. Where at the cemetery, it sits up high. Yeah, so the noise is not buffered at all.
We have, uh...
You know, Lata did all that, where they, you know, raised their tracks.
Yeah, they, they put in the, in the bridges to, to get the trains off.
What really would've been the ideal thing would've been for them to take the railroad tracks down I-35, and then come in from, you know, down past Gardner, you know, but they're not gonna do that, because they, that's gonna cost them too much money. But, you know...
And, and...
And I'm sure the people live over on Moonlight, you know, they, they've done all that road over there, but that's on the main part of the city, and, you know, there's more money, I'm sure, involved than our little houses that we live in.
That, that project, that quiet zone, was included in the, the Moonlight Road Construction. All of that was bundled into one. And for, you know, I guess for everybody, I don't know how much you, you know, any change from a quiet zone perspective is our responsibility. The, we could petition the railroad to do that, but anything, anything that happens in a quiet zone is gonna be the city's responsibility to pay. So, we did have a plan originally to use tax dollars from the intermodal to do that, but then obviously now we can't, we can't do that. So we still have a quiet zone there, and a quiet zone at Grand Street, they're in our plan, but unfortunately, we don't have any sources of income dedicated.
I've heard that before, just like on the curb plan, it was ten years down the road, and they stopped right before my house. So, I don't know, it's pretty fair, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
I would like safety, that's good, isn't it? Sure, that's good. One needs, on, like I said, the safety part of it, I understand. The, I've had, I've lost like three neighbors for a mark, because of these trains. One right south of me, lived there for twenty-plus years, they just, you know, flat couldn't stand it no more, so they had to do what they could do, which I'm sure is more costly than where they moved. But there was another guy in a duplex, I think across from Dave, I think he lived there about three, maybe four weeks. Dave Franks, I'm talking about. And he was gone. Now there's another renter in there, and I knocked on their door the other morning, and they were more than glad to, if I could get something done, or the city could do something about it. And most people that I talked to, they were more glad to be here, to come if they could, but a lot of them didn't show. I've been from Meadowbrook, nursing homes, cleared Main Street, and there's Center Street, and Main, cost a lot of people, you know, if you know, a lot of these people live. Do appreciate the participation and showing up.
And it does, and it makes a difference, everything, and we will, we will, as far as the, as the complaints go, we will, we will contact the railroad, and we'll talk to our, our contacts there about the horns, and excessive horns, and ask them to investigate what's going on with that. You know, I mean, from the standpoint of, of, you know, the quiet zone project, that's a fairly significant...
I mean, you know, we, there's not that much traffic down Poplar.
Right.
You know, because, you know, you're either going to the funeral or leaving the funeral. But it's just an access.
The tampering of entry there, no, compared to elsewhere?
Well, compared to Moonlight Road, or...
Right, yeah. And, you know, I understand, and the cost, like I said, the cost of this project, I don't think the city would be really out a tremendous amount of money, because the arms, the dinger bells, all that's already there.
Right. But we will, we'll investigate and see what the, what the issues, I know we've got an estimate built into our plan now, and for the two, both Grand Street and, and Poplar, and so it's pretty significant. And I guess there's, to do Poplar would be half, Grand Street should be a much slower, well, it's a much slower use once the intermodal...
Well, my understanding is, I talked to Shirley a little bit, and she did get blocked in out there one day.
Oh, yeah.
And I think she was very unhappy about it. And because she had another funeral, an hour or two, or whatever it was, it was fifteen minutes later, but she asked the guy, "Hey, can you move this train up just so I can get the people out of the cemetery, so I can go back to the funeral home to get to another funeral? Because I have another one out here in such amount of time." And when they tell me I'll move, I can move. Other than that, you're just gonna have to suffer. "Oh, okay." That's another one of my comments.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Monica, and I live at 212 Meadowbrook Circle, and I just wanted to reiterate what everybody's saying. I was going to bed the other night about ten thirty, and one train, I counted, to see how long it's gone, flew their horn twelve times, and that, that's not unusual. I've been woken up at four o'clock in the morning with somebody just sitting out on the tracks, blowing their horn. I've heard rumors that one of the guys who runs the train has somebody lives around there, so he blows his horn coming through to let him know he's coming through town. I mean, it's just, it's just a every night thing. And I've lived there fifteen years, and things don't bother me usually when I'm sleeping, it takes a bit to wake me up. So really, three toots and a long one's not gonna affect sleep, but it is, twelve would be, would, would not be unusual for a horn that's be blowing. So, just wanted to add that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sherry Sherman, and I bought the house at 318 Meadowbrook Circle in nineteen eighty-nine, and I am one of the neighbors that Cap has talked about that moved away, because I replaced my windows, I did everything, so I could tolerate the noise. I couldn't even go out and mow with that, you know, you can't even think when all this noise is going on. I mean, a mower's loud enough without that. But you can make improvements to your home, you can do whatever, but you just, you can't live with that noise constantly. And I moved to Olathe, and I can still hear the trains, but I'm not sitting basically right on the track. So I can tolerate it to a point, but it's just getting ridiculous here in Gardnerian. If you can have a, a no-blow up here on Moonlight where people aren't living or trying to live, why can't you do it down where there's residential areas? I mean, I have a house that I need to sell, and I'm worried that I'm not even gonna be able to sell the home, because people are gonna hear this noise, and I don't wanna live there. So, what am I gonna do? I have a house to sell, and I can't live with the noise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, as I said, we're gonna certainly contact the railroad regarding the horn usage and, and the patterns and so on, and lodge a complaint on your behalf there, and we'll include you on any correspondence that we receive. We will do in writing, to be sure that we do get a, a letter, and then we'll investigate a little further, what sort of options we have with respect to quiet zone on that. In particular, I know the, you know, the design characteristics are such, you're not, you have to make it preventable to be able to go around the barricades completely and so on, so I don't know...
Well, I think if they did go around the barriers, they'd be hung up on the tracks.
Yeah, so I don't know exactly, I mean, if we have to put curbs or something, I have no idea what the design standards, but we can look into that a little further, at least for the Poplar Street. I don't, like I said, Grand Street's probably not, even in the future, won't be as...
Well, being as they took that track out, I don't imagine that, you know...
There's, there's gonna be two tracks on that side as well, but they're gonna be slow, they're gonna be slow in and out of the facility, and not mainline like the ones on, on the north side, so...
Well, I can, I can live with a little bit of the trains sitting there waiting to pass one.
To pass, right.
Whatever, I can live with a little of that.
Right, but it's, uh...
That constant horn blowing.
Well, we will certainly, we'll certainly contact them, first thing.
I appreciate it.
Very good, thank you. Before we go on to consent agenda, is there anyone else? I wanna make sure everyone has their chance to be heard. So I'm gonna assume that everyone else concurs with the comments that were, that were said earlier. Okay? Very good, thank you, thank you all. You're welcome to stay.
Oh, I, I've got other plans. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Give everybody a chance. All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a council member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? How would council like to proceed with the consent agenda?
I would prefer the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Marrow, that we approve of consent agenda, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. New business item number one. Consider canceling the Gardner spillway improvement project, and authorizing the state administrator to take necessary actions to terminate existing contracts relating to product, project, excuse me, David.
Thank you. It's been a little while coming, I think I sent a council update, just informing you we're having issues with modeling. We're finally able to get through all those issues, confirm the fact that the modeling doesn't work. Little background on the project, the Gardner Lake spillway was first identified as a potential stormwater management project when Johnson County had the Kill Creek watershed study down in the early two thousands. That study began about two thousand and three, and was completed about two thousand and six. Study was performed by CDM, Camp Dresser in McKee, and was the basis of the FEMA maps for the Kill Creek watershed that were adopted by FEMA in August of twenty-two thousand nine. During the city's watershed master plan study... During the city's watershed master plan study, uh, confirmed the fact that, based on the modeling from the Kill Creek watershed study, that this was a potential SMAC project. SMAC being an acronym for the Johnson County Stormwater Management Program. The, uh, reason it would qualify is, uh, the new mapping, uh, which was based on the new hydraulics for a hundred-year storm and fully developed indicated that there are twenty-seven houses around Gardner Lake. All of, for the most part, all of them were in the county, uh, would be within the new floodplain for the future conditions floodplain, hundred-year floodplain. Additionally, the road was inundated, which, uh, on the point system that the county stormwater program uses to evaluate projects was good for points. So, uh, it's like we had a viable project. Uh, we proceeded with hiring J-two engineering to do a preliminary engineering study, which is the first step to secure county funding. Uh, confirmed the fact that there were twenty-seven houses. A viable project could be accomplished that would get twenty of those houses out of the floodplain, uh, would replace the, at this time, by this time, closed roadway across the spillway with a, basically a bridge, uh, and lower the floodplain to get twenty of those houses out of the floodplain. Cost of that project was about two-point-nine-eight, two-point-seven-nine million. City share would be about seven-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand. The county would be in for about two million. Uh, proceeded to get funding for design in two thousand and eleven. Uh, we also had funding for construction this year. Just to back up, the scope of the project included increasing the size of the spillway, uh, cleaning out the existing, or basically replacing the existing spillway road with a bridge, uh, cleaning out the channel, basically doing the maintenance we need to do for it. Because of the, the stormwater benefits, we're able to get reconstructed spillway channel. J-two, while they were doing the design, uh, in their due diligence, started checking the model, which was the basis for everything, uh, discovered that CDM had assumed, uh, basically their model indicated there was detention within the lake instead of flowing out. There's four-foot freeboard. So, what would happen is you get a large storm, the lake fills up first, and it starts to flow out. It's not the case. Through their analysis, uh, found that the flows were actually sixty percent greater of the spillway than, uh, what the FEMA-approved model had indicated. Now, with the county, uh, they talked to CDM, this is back in September. Uh, we still felt at this time, uh, we could come up with a workable solution. Uh, started looking at different spillway configurations, uh, the device that controls the weir. And there's different ways you can, uh, increase the weir capacity. You'd have to increase the bridge size. Uh, proceeded with permitting because, as I say, up until, uh, probably early this year, we were, felt that we did, still could salvage the project. Finally, the county, uh, talked to CDM, got them to do some more evaluation. Uh, toward the, going into summer, basically, now, confirmed, fill it, excuse me, confirmed what Chat's evaluation, uh, J-two's evaluation indicated. Project wasn't viable. One of the regulations for stormwater funding is you cannot have impacts downstream. The initial study for this project indicated that, uh, the increased flow out of the spillway would essentially be nullified by a hundred-fifty-first street. So, through, uh, channel work, detention, uh, we could basically neutralize any impact of releasing more water around the lake. With the added flows, uh, the impacts, uh, are measurable up to about K-ten. Uh, there are some impacts theoretically with the model in De Soto. Whether or not they are statistically viable or statistically significant's another story. But still, uh, the no-impact downstream criteria was not met. Based on that, uh, we are recommending, uh, canceling the project. Can't be built under the current criteria with the impacts downstream. We've spent approximately between, uh, us and the county, two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars. The county has reimbursed us seventy-five percent. Uh, the city's share is about sixty-four thousand for what's been spent so far. What we have gained from this, uh, we do have a quite bit of information that can be used in the future. We do have a permit, so if we should, uh, find the funds in the future, we would be ready to go ahead and proceed with spillway renovation. Uh, we do have, uh, modeling and analysis. The, our Department of Water Resources permit requires a emergency action plan. They require a dam, uh, analysis to be done, which is a very costly procedure. We now have that information to append our emergency action plan. Uh, we did have confirmed the fact that during the design storm that BWR requires, we have adequate dam height and maintain freeboard. Uh, so we have fulfilled some of the obligations for our Department of Water Resources permit for the dam. Still doesn't answer the question of would we have proceeded with this project? Kind of the backup to the preliminary engineering study, the standard of care for those. As you take whatever modeling is available, uh, the assumption being the FEMA model had gone through review by the engineer that did the work, review by FEMA. You don't check it at that point. However, J-two are doing their design work, did the proper thing, their due diligence, double-checked the model, and found this, uh, this, uh, this issue. For us, it is an impact because of, you know, the project is no longer viable. For the county, it's an impact because their floodplain mapping needs some revision. So, it's impacting all of us. Where we go from here, what we're asking you to do is just by voice motion, cancel the project, and then we can proceed with canceling our contract with, uh, J-two, cancel their contract with the county. Uh, we are talking to the county about what options do we have and discussing with the engineer that did the initial modeling. I don't really have any details I can provide at this point. Uh, I do know since the work was done under a contract with the county, we probably have to go in with, I'm gonna say, a third-party, you know, discussions. Hopefully, all this can be resolved with, uh, discussions. But at this point, I really, all I can do is say we are going to pursue what we can. It's not a total loss for us because, as I say, the analysis for the dam safety is a fairly costly venture, so we do have that, but, uh, still unfortunate. Uh, we thought we had a way to solve problems for a lot of people. When people have the floodplain, getting the roadway back open and solving a maintenance issue we have, but unfortunately, we don't have the, we haven't answered the questions.
The, uh, obviously, the, the, the funds from the county are dependent upon the criteria that they talked about as far as downstream impact and so on. Uh, since we are responsible for that theoretically, if we had, if we had the money, could we proceed with the plan as written even though it has a downstream impact? Or are we prevented from doing anything that creates...
The county would not wish to. We could proceed if we so desired.
Okay.
However, we're talking probably two million dollars.
Right, yeah.
It's a substantial amount of money, and with the downstream impacts, we would have to do everything we can to nullify it. So, it would not be a advisable solution.
And it, and I guess in the next logical question is, are there things that can be done to mitigate the issues going on with the flow and so on? You know, were the principal costs associated with the roadway? Were the principal costs associated with the spillway and so on? Or is that, is that something that would cost us significantly more to find that out?
Well, I think, I think, you know, to answer the, this burning question, well, what about the roadway? Well, back when we originally had to close the roadway to come back in with concrete, we had some...